All right, good afternoon. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, January 6, 2020. Ms. Clark, if you'll go through this afternoon's agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, after the Pledge of Allegiance, we have two appointments, one with the Treasurer Collector, Melissa Morrissey, to sign and approve her new contract, and by Chief Tim Haren to give us an update on whatever he's talking about.
Thank you. You join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, is anyone here this afternoon for open forum?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Patrick Town Clark. I just want to remind everybody that the annual town election will be Saturday, April 11th, 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and nomination papers are now available at Town Clerk's office. The last day to obtain papers is Wednesday, February 19th, and the last day to return them is Friday, February 21st. So for the seats to be filled this year, we have a moderator for three years, selectman three years, assessor three years. School committee, there's two seats, both for three years. The East Bridgewater Housing Authority, it's three years to finish a term. Generally, that's a five-year term. Trustees of the Public Library, we have two seats, they're both three years. Board of Health for three years. Planning Board, we have three seats for three years. And also, I want to say that on February 12th, the Town Clerk's office will be open until 8:00 p.m. That's the last day to register to vote for the February 3 presidential primary. Any questions, feel free to call the office. It's (508) 378-1606.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Seeing no one else here for open forum, we'll close open forum and we'll go right into our appointments. If you'd like to come up, Ms. Morrissey. How are you doing? This is our second contract with you.
Yes.
You guys have anything to add, or Ms. Noble?
This is a pleasure to bring this contract forward to the Board of Selectmen, as Melissa has done an outstanding job in her tenure here, and she is a pleasure to work with.
Nice to hear.
Did I go by the quote often, just to see how things are going? And it must be great, because she keeps saying, "Everything's fine, why don't you get out of here?"
It's coming in too much, hanging out too much. We're getting back down to the community center. But I think over the years, and I mean, you know, just all the changes, and you're a big help, I think, over the last, you know, eight, nine months, when we had some changes. And, you know, we're relying on you and Phyllis quite a bit to get through things. And, you know, I think you really showed, you know, what a value you are to the town, and I look forward to working with you again for the next couple of years.
Again, hopefully, this will be the second of many contracts to come.
Hopefully, yeah.
You're going for your second certification now?
I am. I have to finish the courses, so, because you can't take them both at the same time, because, of course, the way they schedule them, they're all at the same time. So I do have to take my classes, but not that it's an easier exam, but it's a lot less detailed. So I should be able to take my third, right at the end of my third year, week, I'll be able to take the exam, so, yep, so I should be able to pass that one, too.
Thanks.
Great.
I think we chose wisely, and I'm glad that Brian agrees, and here we are, so.
This has been fantastic.
I love it.
Excellent.
Great.
I love working here, it's great.
Thank you for everything that you do. Without, I'll make a motion that we go into contract effective on the...
First of July.
First of July, 2020, a three-year contract. And everything in here has been talked about, and everything in here is good, so. And will begin July 1st, actually, June 31st of 2022. 2023, I'm sorry.
Are you done? Second.
Any further discussion, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. Bring up the fire chief, because he'll probably be here for a while anyhow.
I'm taking your sign, by the way. But I'll roll my eyes on that.
I'll give you yours after.
Yeah.
What's that sign say?
Put the motion as long as it can. I believe, Chris was here, swimming.
Dead weight.
Thank you. Move on to the next point with the Fire Chief, Tim Haren, to give us an update on the rolling stock.
Rolling stock.
Rolling stock is how it's written.
I didn't make it, but it's something you're finding everywhere.
Rolling stock gathers no moss?
Dow Jones is down 500 points today.
I'm not responsible for that.
Thank you.
I keep signing, Mr. Clark.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, good afternoon. I don't want to tie up much of your time, however. Give you a handout that is pretty much a bullet presentation of why I need to replace our 1997 tower ladder. Briefly, back in 1996, I believe it was a September special town meeting, town voted to spend $1.2 million to purchase two engines, a ladder, forest fire, and a service truck, all at one whack. And here we are, 22 years later, and all that apparatus is 22 years old. With the exception of Engine One, which was replaced in 2017, leaving two additional pieces that needed to be replaced so we could get them on more rotating schedules, so we don't take such a hit that we took 22 years ago. That $1.2 million 22 years ago is $2.3 million today. So Engine One's been replaced. We were supposed to replace Engine Two next. Well, that was my plan, and do the tower last, because it's the highest-ticket vehicle. However, the tower truck, and I am sorry, I wanted to get you my maintenance records for it over the past several years, but the service kind of went down today for a while, and I wasn't able to do that. But I've spent probably $80,000-plus on that truck in maintenance over the past five to six years. It's been out of service cumulatively over a year during that same period of time due to mechanical breakdowns. It's currently out of service right now because it could not pass its National Fire Protection Agency required ladder test. Could not pick up 1,000 pounds. I did have a company in here on, well, yesterday, that supposedly recalibrated a computer or whatever, and we'll find out Wednesday whether or not it's going to pass its test. But that's still an unknown to me. Regardless of the fact, it is still 22 years old. It has, the odometer broke many years ago by going by the engine hours at a rate of about 30 miles per hour. It has about 72,000 miles on it. So... The cost to replace that truck today is anywhere between $1.2 to $1.4 million. The truck we have right now is an 85-foot tower ladder, meaning it can go 85 feet in the air, but its reach is only 73 feet, 2 inches. Truck that I plan on replacing it with is a 100-foot tower ladder that has a reach of 99 feet. So we're gaining, God bless you, about 26 feet, which is important, because when the town bought this vehicle 22 years ago, we didn't have these big colonial subdivisions that we have now, like the whole captain's way. That didn't, to my knowledge, I don't think that even existed. Not that it's a big deal, because we can use ground ladders for that if necessary. It's a lot safer to use a tower ladder. But my main concern, out of every building in East Bridgewater, my main concern, and the one I worry about the most, is the rear of the central school. So there's three stories in the back of the central school. And on the second floor, or the third floor, or technically the second floor, but the top floor is where they have second graders. Now, anybody, any child in the central school, due to their age, is not capable of self-preservation. And I've been going back and forth whether I should just go with a straight-stick ladder, which is just a ladder truck, no platform, or if I should go with a platform. I think I might have talked to you about this a couple times over the course of the past 18 months. And I was laying in bed one night, and I was thinking, "I'm going to go with a straight-stick." And then it dawned on me, like, you know, a year from now, I'm going to kick myself in the pants for not just replacing what I have with what I have. It's safer to work from, and speaking on the central school, if I had to evacuate a classroom full of kids, I can do it one at a time with an aerial ladder. With a tower, I can do half the classroom at once. It's got a 1,000-pound load. Two firefighters would go up, one would go in, enter the building, 10 kids would come out, go on the platform, drop down, dump them off, come back up, grab the other half. I can evacuate a classroom in minutes, I mean, yeah, in likely about two minutes, three minutes compared to, well, one child at a time, up and down. That's a long time, and that's my greatest concern. We're short on manpower, especially when it comes to fires. It's, we're no different than any other small town. You know, cities go with, you know, three or four engine companies and two ladders to a house fire. We're going with one engine and a ladder right off the bat, if the ambulance is in quarters. With civilian dispatch, that's going to help, too, coming up, because now I'll be able to dump everybody out and go, so I won't have to have someone back there to sit in the desk. So hopefully, with all the ambulances in quarters, I'll have five, between five and seven people able to respond right away to a fire incident. So the average cost for a, I believe I figured this at $1.3 million. The average cost is $12.04 per year per 4,500 households in East Bridgewater over a 24-year period is pretty much $3.87, I'm sorry, $12.04 per year per household. It's $3.87, $3.87 per person, based on a population of 14,000 over 24 years. So in reality, it's, though it seems like a lot of money, and I agree, it is a lot of money, it really isn't over the course of its lifetime. I have a plan to pay for it, not go through taxation or without increasing taxes. If a rather significant down payment would be done through the ambulance account. Now, granted, this still has to go through finance, it has to go through capital, but we were, I was looking at putting about $700,000 down right off the bat. They have a truck available right now, it's $1.186 million. That's in Louisiana. That doesn't do us any good right now, but they can have another one available in three months. That's more realistic, that we might not have to wait a year, because it takes a year to build them. We won't have to wait a year. If they build this, we get the town meeting, and I'm suggesting we do it on a special, two articles, one on a special, one on an annual. If I don't get a form of the special, it's on the annual. If I get the form of the special, I can buy the truck the next day, I can pass over the article with the annual. Do you know what I mean? So if I don't get a form of the special, and I don't have an annual, we're dead in the water for another year. With your blessing today to proceed with this, or if you think it's a good idea to proceed, I will be taking a trip to Louisiana, where this truck is at, to make sure it actually fits into, I mean, the company's going to fly me down, it's not going to cost us anything, but to make sure this will fit into what we need. And the next truck off the line will be the splitting image of the truck that's there now. I could tell you that it, the truck in the past, when we bought it, we were operating with three-man groups, you know, that didn't go out often. Then we went up to four-man groups, or four firefighter groups when we had the second ambulance. Now we're at five firefighter groups, 24/7, except for Monday through Thursday, and we're at Monday through Thursday, everyday deputy, and Tuesday through Friday, everyday lieutenant. So during the day, we're kind of a little bit heavier on manpower. This truck will respond, once civilian dispatch takes over, this truck will respond on all fire alarms, second piece going off for motor vehicle accidents, because it's, I'm applying for a grant to get a new set of jaws for it, at about $50,000. I don't anticipate that I won't get that. I'm pretty sure I will. I don't know when that'll happen, but there really is a need in this town, and I know it's hard for people to wrap their arms around $1.3 million for a truck that, for a little town like East Bridgewater. But as I said, the main need is the central school, the junior, senior high school, 100 Prospect Street, a lot of elderly, a lot of handicapped, 600 North Bedford Street, not so much because of the size of that building, height-wise, but the size of the building, that's another scary building for me, because that's a very big building. And if we get a fire in the middle of that building, and I...
Which building is that, Chief?
Hot Hanks, the old Foxville Company. It's a sprawling building. If there's a fire in the center of that building in the basement, and I send people in, it's, that's scary to me, it really is. Having a ladder truck that'll actually be able to get high enough over and look down, it's necessary. Compass Medical, another place. The Maracava, Maracava Cotton Gin. My understanding is, well, as it stands now, there's no real life hazard, there's one person that occupies that building for the use of it, but I believe there's potentially a project in the works to either make that into residential over-commercial or full-commercial. That is going to be a huge issue for the fire department-wise, because we don't have access to all sides of that building. The tower truck will help alleviate some of that. Any two-story dwelling that we have, just for roof access, necessary. You saw what we had to do the other day.
I did.
The, much safer to work from for chimney fires. You're standing on a platform rather than the peak of a roof, or for that matter, a roof ladder. And another concern is the Weber block in the center of town. So the Weber block is that block, when you enter the center heading towards Brockton, that whole block on your left, that's the Weber block. Three-story, two- and three-story buildings, if something gets going in there, it's going to be quick work to try and not put the fire out, but stop it from spreading from building to building to building. As I said, it's safer to work from for, you know, rescues, roof operations, fire extinguishment. It's also capable of operating 12 degrees below grade. We had major flooding back in 2004, I think, and we had a water rescue on Spring Street. Somebody decided to go canoeing in the river, when the river was quite swollen and this canoe capsized. This truck would actually be able to go right over there and snatch it right out of the water. And I think I covered everything else in the bullet presentation. Now, like I said, I wanted to keep this for 26 to 30 years, but it's evident that every time I fix it, something else breaks. It's coming more of a safety issue for me, like, I don't really trust that it's going to be in service or not break when I'm needing it, or break on the scene when it's actually being used. And that's why I'm kind of asking for your blessing to move forward, at least, with capital, finance, to see if we can accomplish this. I mean, it's eventually, we're going to have to do something, and the plan now is to take Engine Two, which is the reserve piece, which was built in '97, and just push that off for like another five years. I submitted a 28 plan to capital, I believe it was like four, but that was during, it might have even been longer, but that was during, you know, the crisis that was going on with the schools, unfortunately, and that whole plan kind of fell apart. But it was actually using ambulance account money to pay for most of this and offset, you know, cap, not to offset, but to free up capital for other needs. Like, I have an account, or we have an account, that we can use for this, and that's what I'm hoping to do this year. And that, by the way, still, that ambulance account still pays, this fiscal year paid $685,000 towards both the fire department and half the civilian dispatch budget, and it will do so again next year, if not more. And still have enough money left over to help alleviate this issue without actually having to go and finance it and pay interest on that as well.
I think you've made a great case, and we've talked about this over the last couple of years. Any question about the, this fitting into the station?
No, Abington has the exact same truck. I went down to Abington, I measured it. It's much, it's much lower, number one. In order to build one that has a platform, like, the one we have now, the platform is off the front. This one, the platform's off the rear. It dropped the height about two feet. To get a platform off the front, it's a special build, it's a 300-day build time, they don't stock them because it's a custom build. You have to drop, like, you have to notch the cab down, so the ladder sits lower, so it'll actually back in. Once you start making custom things, that's when the price starts to go up. That's why I had submitted a capital article for, I believe, $1.4 million, just to make sure that it could cover it. If everything falls apart and I, nothing comes to fruition, and I have to do that, that's what it's going to cost. That truck right now is $1,186,000 and some change down in Louisiana. The second one, I asked the salesman, he said the price should be pretty much similar. They're like sister trucks, so hopefully, we can get out of this and save almost $200, $215,000, which would be helpful as well.
Yeah, I mean, as you know, Chief, I saw this in action on Friday, and watching firefighters climb ladders to go up on the second story of my sister-in-law's house for a chimney fire was nerve-wracking, and it, you know, everything was fine, but still, you know, we looked at this, of course, what you said was, now, when I come Monday, you better support me.
I did not say.
He might have.
He threatened you?
He did.
I did not.
But, you know, seeing that was, made it pretty glaringly obvious that this is something that we should have, because they were at risk. You know, they're climbing ladders to go up on a roof, and then another ladder to go up higher, and it was, you know, a little bit scary, so.
Kind of unprecedented, too, is that was the fourth chimney fire we've had. We had the first one December 19th, I just know that because I was in Aruba when it happened. And then we had three more, and it's not even really cold yet. So is this going to be our year for chimney fires? I really, hopefully, we don't, because the ladder truck's out of service, it's just, it's just unsafe. But it is what it is, we'll mitigate it one way or the other. But thank you. And that roof was, that was a weird roof, too.
It is, well, it's...
Like a roof on top of a roof.
Yeah, yeah.
And it was slippery as well.
Yep, it was wet.
Yeah, I remember, when I climbed a ladder, it kind of slid back, but it is what it is.
And I think just, you know, the fact that it's much safer having the tower truck than a stick going up there. I mean, you know, like you said, God forbid, if there's some incident over at the central school, you know, and clear kids out quicker, and I think just day-to-day operation, it's got to be far safer being in that than...
In full disclosure, a straight-stick ladder's about $200,000 cheaper. It is, I'm not going to, I'm not going to lie to anyone. It's about $980,000 compared to $1.1 million. But that central school thing is my thing, and I can evacuate in half a classroom in one whack.
And the fact that we're paying for a good chunk of this out of the ambulance account.
Yeah, so my plan is to not borrow, not raise taxes, just use money that's there. I was speaking with Mr. Noble. We could borrow the remaining out of stabilization, and the ambulance account would replace stabilization, likely between a two- to four-year period, depending on how many receipts we get. Oh, speaking of that, so... So, so far this year, we brought in $543,869.99 in ambulance receipts. Doubling that would be $1,087,000 from June, July 1st to June 30th. Now, obviously, if town meeting is in May, we can't spend money we don't have. So I went up to the end of March. And at the end of March, the balance would be about one point, just under $1.5 million. So we'll be able to take the normal amount we normally take out for the budget, the annual budget, and have left over enough to provide for substantial payment on this truck without having to go through stabilization. So if it was, say I could put $700,000 into it, it's going to cost, we'll say, one, two. I'd need 500 from stabilization, and then over two to three, I'll stretch it to four years, stabilization would be made whole.
It's a great idea.
Well, the stabilization, I have to give to Mr. Noble, he was the one that came up with that one, and I agree with you.
Plus, now, does this mean Santa can still ride?
He can, he'll just be riding in the back.
Because that was a concern with the other proposal that you had.
I've, I've heard that concern, I've heard it from different committees as well, but...
We all have priorities.
That's right.
The priorities, that was the last of my priorities, honestly, but it is what it is.
But it is that nice little bonus.
It is, I will agree with you, Carol.
We can put your Santa Claus in the convertible.
And I do think, as Chair, though, and with the colder weather coming, I will volunteer to go down to Louisiana to take a first-hand look at this vehicle.
Sorry, you can't do that.
Don't let school, Aaron, school. I'm retired, I'll join you soon.
Now, I think it's, I mean, we've spoken...
You couldn't possibly risk your life with an air flight.
Send the clerk.
Send Dave.
Send the clerk, don't worry. Life's not that much longer running out.
And my eye's going to roll.
That hurts.
I think it's something we definitely need to move forward on.
Yes.
It's been in discussion now for well over a year, you brought it to our attention, and time to move forward with it.
Great, thank you.
Great show, good presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time today.
And thanks for last week.
You're welcome.
Guys, do the best.
Anytime, anytime.
Move on to our action items.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of December 16, 2019, 4:00 p.m. Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve, but not release, the minutes of December 16, 2019, 4:30 executive session Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to release minutes of the October 25, 2019, 9:20 a.m. Executive Session Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the resignation of David Walsh from the Board of Registars effective December 30, 2019.
Second.
Any further discussion? I'd just like to thank Mr. Walsh for volunteering on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve to disband the Town Administrator Screening Committee effective January 6, 2020. Not too sure about that.
Maybe we should hold on to those names.
We might still meet those.
It's keeping it a little longer.
I'll second it.
And thank you to all the volunteers, it was quite a bit of work on that. All in favor?
Aye.
It's quality work.
Plus, they found us a good one, so.
What's he calling? Mr. Chairman, I move to review and approve changes to the taxi license policy effective January 6, 2020.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the following common vicarage license renewal for the period ending December 31, 2020. License 28 Vaughn M. Inc., doing business as Subway.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to use the right to first refusal for lots located on Assessor's Map 108, Block 5, Harvard Street, property owned by Geraldine Wozmaus.
Second.
All right, any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Southeastern Regional Service Group contract award for DPW services from February 1, 20, through January 31, 21.
Second.
Any further discussion? No, this is just something we do every year, just, you know, just standard. All in favor?
Aye.
December action items.
Thank you. Anything for Town Administrator Report?
Certainly, thank you. Meeting this afternoon, and we are in full gear now on budget season, the Finance Committee convenes this afternoon. We have the Town Clerk, the Conservation Commission, the veterans, and the Building and Planning Department making presentations this evening. I'd also like to inform you that the Mass DOT has let the town of East Bridgewater know that we're receiving a supplemental grant under Chapter 90 of another $37,000, addition to the Chapter 90 monies, which is road maintenance money.
Right.
For the audience at home. So that came in today, which was good news.
Good.
Also, I received communication from the... Also, I received communication from the EPA for our Brownfields grant proposal, was received and has moved to consideration, which is the first hurdle. So I'm very optimistic, so let's keep our fingers crossed.
Great, thank you. All right, anything for board discussion?
As Town Administrator.
There were-
Board discussions.
You moved the policies.
Oh, okay. The nonprofit funding policy, first reading?
This is presented to you for first reading, it's the nonprofit funding policy. We have had, it has been approached by nonprofits, that some we provide, they provide services to the town, others do not. So there is a policy recommendation for you. Also, I've had correspondence with the Town Council and with the state of Massachusetts to determine what is allowed and what is not, so we'll incorporate that into the pers, into the policy as a statement at the end of what is not allowed. So, want to make sure that we do this correct, and we want to make sure that we are in compliance with the law. In addition, also presented to you for first reading is a social media policy. We don't have one at the current time, so it's time we adopted one, and so that is presented for you for first reading. Also, a vehicle use policy is presented to you for first reading. These basically cover the use of your private vehicle during town business, and what the town is responsible and what is not responsible. It also covers the use of town vehicles. As you know, right now, the town hall departments do not have vehicles, only vehicles are in highway, police, fire, van at the senior center, et cetera. But for those traveling in personal cars on town business, this covers you, explains the insurance obligation, liability obligation, et cetera. So that's important for us to have for that. And of course, talks about the need for us to do a driver's background check for anybody that's actually driving a town vehicle on their regular driver's license. And then we have, well, if I never get to the bottom of the vehicle use policy, we have the roadway acceptance policy, and we have guests to discuss that, so I'm off the hook.
Gentlemen?
Gentlemen, surely a mistaken question.
Want to just jump right into it, or?
Well, it's your show, it's a-
Just give us a little background, if you could, on exactly what we're trying to accomplish that we haven't had in, you know, in, in effect before.
I'm not sure, I think what we're trying to do is get some things cleaned up-
Right.
-that have been hanging out there for a long time, that the bonds were either non-existent or insurance bonds that went belly up, the cash ran out for. There are some of the roads in town that haven't accepted, have literally been there for 100-plus years, Keith Place being one of them, and just what do we need to do to move these forwards, get them off-center? Roy's probably got some better history on some of these than I do. I've approached Brian about, you know, working with either, you know, the, the town highway surveyor, there was a project at one point, I think we had some success a few years ago with getting a couple of them off-center and accepted, but there's been others where there were minor, I'll, I'll say minor things to be done, like filling in between the sidewalks and the street, and maybe some issues up off of Winter Street with Army Corps of Engineers that had some ladders, and they never got off-center, and I think they were at a point now, if we could get the right people to revisit that from an engineering point of view, that we could maybe get these things moved forward and get them accepted, get some revenue back for the town.
I mean, it is something you folks have been working on over the years, I mean, over the years at town meeting, we've accepted a few here and there, and, you know, I just think having a written policy that you guys have worked on with Brian will kind of smooth things out, and like you said, some of these streets are, been in town for what, 100 years, and-
Well, the main thing is, it's, it's the cost to do it, you know, the engineering review, you know, it's, you know, do we have some antiquated language, language as far as setting the bounds go versus now what we, what we can do with GIS and, and those type of things that are available. Plus, there are some issues in town, there's been some streets where, you know, the roadways that went in 35 years ago, that aren't where they were laid out to be, and that can be a, an issue. Certain selectmen lives on one of those roads.
We have approximately 20 miles of unaccepted streets.
My next question.
And my goal here is, we probably won't be able to address all 20 miles at one fell swoop, but let's start picking up two or three a year, finding out where we are. Some will be easy, some are gonna be very difficult, but some have money attached to them, most don't. But ignoring the problem isn't gonna make it go away, and if we can get the, the streets are, are being plowed, and we are picking up trash, and we're picking up kids at school buses, so we need to move towards acceptance. In addition, there's a small incentive in the sense that we will be able to count them on our Chapter 90 census, so that's important. Don't be fooled, however, the Chapter 90 money isn't gonna cover the cost of some of these roads, but we need to move in that direction. As the chairman has said to me on several occasions, people who bought houses on these roads probably didn't even know they were unaccepted roads. We've been providing services to these taxpayers, and we need to basically straighten this out. And so with the help of Steve and Roy and their cooperation, and, and we'll pick out two or three roads at, at a time, and, and keep bringing them forward until we get it resolved. But I see some spending on some actually, we're probably gonna have to bring some roads up to snuff, and we're probably gonna have to spend some money on, on the legal budget to get the roads properly, you know, conveyed to the town, and we're gonna need some cooperation from the butters to bring those roads into, to proper form.
Now, we're talking 20 miles of roadway approximately, how many streets are we actually talking? Do you have any idea, Roy?
I think it's 60 somewhat.
Wow.
Yeah, we're not gonna do-
It may be slightly, slightly less than that, but, because I think we've accepted a couple in, in the last two town meetings. The, the intent of the, the document there, though, is to, is to pursue, connecting that to the subdivision rules and regulations is one of the documents that we give to subdivisions. Also, to be able to hand out to, I've received individually multiple calls in the last year of people wanting to get their roadway accepted, so it can get fixed. And, and the laws get kind of complicated because they're cross-jurisdictional, between a bunch of different places. Obviously, the acceptance piece belongs to the selectman, and the legal work that goes with this, that, that also belongs to the selectman. But some of the other pieces belong to the planning board, if it's a, it's a subdivision roadway approval, we need to get as-built plans, we need to make sure we get initial draft copies of deeds that we can then pass on to you, those kind of steps. That's currently, although they fall under three or four different pieces of state law, there's no language that we have in our subdivision rules and regulations that really define what those are, and the, the attempt at that document, which Town Council helped, helped us put together and has initially reviewed, was to have in one place the step someone has to go through to get a roadway accepted. I mean, whether it be a new subdivider or a resident in the town who wants to get a roadway accepted, the process, to some extent, is the same. There is those subdivisions which were approved under what we refer to as modern subdivision control, that were intended to be accepted from day one, that for several different reasons that, that complicate things, haven't been accepted yet. Those we need to address kind of one at a time to figure out how we're gonna get enough information on them so that we can have enough documentation, including an as-built plan, that we can get recorded, that we can then pro, you know, continue the process to get them accepted.
Can we establish some type of committee to review and prioritize how we can get this done?
We've sort of already started that, in picking out some of the easier roads to accept, meaning that either they've been deeded to the town already, or the road has been built to a standard, where there has been a, you know, biggest problem is the final step, which is there are very few roads that are unaccepted that have as-built plans. So we need to determine, as we look at that, how much money's still left in the bond, and we'll ask us to draw the as-built plan. And fortunately, we have one property coming forward at this town meeting, hopefully, that's probably one of the easiest to do, so it's a no-brainer, but this is gonna take a lot of work and a lot of time. But I'm glad that Roy has time, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roy.
Appreciate it. All right, anything else?
No, thank you. A lot of work.
I read it, it was awful. Just say nicely.
Thanks for coming in, appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Anything for announcements? All right. You know, just one other thing on the board discussions, unfortunately for you two, I did pull papers, so I do plan on running again, so.
Kevin turned it back, didn't he?
We'll see. No, it happened.
Yeah, read the sign. Read the sign.
You didn't roll your eyes at that, did you?
No.
He probably sprained your eyes.
I know. Did you see your glasses crack on that one?
Yeah.
So, look forward to serving the town for another three years, I think we've put a good team together here over the last couple of years, and, you know, look forward to continuing that, so, thank you. Deville going to take motion, go into executive session.
Chairman, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Paragraph 21A2, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, DPW Director, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions administrative and clerical association, if in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining litigation position of the public body, as the chair so declares, and not to return to open session. Roll call, David Sheedy, clerk.
William Darling, Chair.
Carol Julius, Vice Chair.
All right.
See you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.